Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Monroeville Planning Commission, municipality of Monroeville, June 19th, 7:30 PM. Would we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a brief moment of silence?
Pledge allegiance. The flag. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please be seated. Sharon, roll call, please.
Mr. Botterney.
Here.
Mrs. Lawrence.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Masong.
Here.
Ms. Lewis Burke.
Here.
Mr. Segelson.
Here.
Mr. Weldon.
Here.
Okay, first order of business, I'd like to move forward with the approval of minutes from last month, the May 15th. I'd like to seek a motion to approve those minutes, please.
All motion.
A second.
Okay, we heard a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion is passed from last month. Okay, Paul, going to turn the old business over to you regarding the Old Stone Village.
Okay, the applicant has three applications before us. I'll read all three items. The first order of business would be to untable all three items, and then I'll read them, and then the applicant will do their presentation. So, you want to make a motion to untable?
Absolutely. Seek a motion, please, to untable the Old Stone Village.
All motion.
A second.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and it is untabled from last month.
So, first application, 23-1-PRD, Old Stone Village. Applicant, Berquentin Land Development, is requesting approval pursuant to Article 6, Planned Residential Development of the Monroeville Zoning Ordinance Number 2779, to construct a planned residential development consisting of seven apartment buildings with a total of 426 units and associated site amenities. The property is located adjacent to Giant Eagle and identified as tax parcels 744-F29, 744-F41, 744-F43, 744-F51, 744-F160, and 744-R145 in the R4 multifamily residential and S conservancy zoning districts. The second part of this application is 23-7-C, Old Stone Village. Applicant, Berquentin Land Development, is requesting conditional use approval pursuant to Section 504VV, major excavation of the Monroeville Zoning Ordinance Number 2779, to permit a cut-and-fill operation totaling approximately 43,702 cubic yards of earth. The property is located adjacent to Giant Eagle and identified as tax parcels, I'll just read them all again, 744-F29, 744-F41, 744-F43, 744-F51, 744-F160, and 744-R145 in the R4 multifamily residential and S conservancy zoning district. The third part of the application, 23-6-SUB, Old Stone Village. Applicant, Berquentin Land Development, is requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval to subdivide and consolidate tax parcels 744-F29, 744-F41, 744-F43, 744-F51, 744-F160, and 744-R145 into one lot with a total area of 53.785 acres in the R4 multifamily residential and S conservancy zoning districts. The properties are located adjacent to the Giant Eagle and Target Shopping Center. And the applicant is here. Would you like to make a presentation?
Evening. Well, I know we presented at last month's meeting. I don't know if anyone has any other questions. I know the main issue was to...
Could you state your name, sir?
Ray Gusty from Theringham McCarty Gray.
Thank you.
So, we presented this plan last month, last month's meeting. I think the main issue at that time was to get together with the homeowners association and address their concerns.
I do recall last month, both parties were supposed to get together. I think Mr. Edelstein, if he's here, you know, we can move forward with that. But please, if you have anything additional, you know, please present it to the board and go from there.
Mr. Edelstein, would you like to say anything tonight, or you just let them do their presentation?
You can do your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I can use this one. So, like I said, we, you know, we, Berquentin has been working with homeowners association since last month's meeting. I believe we have, we've addressed most of their comments. Since that time, we've illuminated the parking spaces that were in the conservancy district located here.
Okay.
We had a, so it's shown on this drawing, we had a nature trail system through this area, the plan. We've shortened, it came down close to the Timberland Estates. We shortened that trail, pulled it back here to address our concerns for that. In front of buildings four and five, where the sign wall is, we've raised that sign wall. Since we're adding a fourth floor to that building, we've, to those two buildings, we've increased the height of the sign wall to maintain the site distance.
Right.
The sight line, that was part of the original agreement. We've also provided them with revised cross-sections that show that revised sight line.
Okay.
And there's still an issue that we need to resolve in this corner here, where the sign wall is, and the fence, there's several utility crossings there. We need to, we still need to work out where those gates go.
Okay.
But we've eliminated a lot of the fence and replaced it with the sign wall.
Okay, all right. Mr. Edelstein, would you like to step up to the mic, please?
I think to develop an appropriate way to speak personally.
Okay. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good. Can I have your name again, please?
Matt Flickinger, Vice President of Land Acquisitions for Berquentin Group.
Okay, Matt. Matt, I do remember last month, and I know the parties were supposed to get together. You did have a few points there that needed to be worked out. Did you have your face-to-face meeting, and did you work out the problems?
We did. We worked through the issues, I think, to the approval of the HOA and the Timberland Group. So, we are at the point now where we are hoping that we can move forward.
Absolutely. Mr. Edelstein, is that correct?
Can I accept your word?
Absolutely. Please step up.
On behalf of the Timberland Estates Homeowners Association, we appreciate your table of this last month.
Sure.
We've been working with the developer, and a memorandum of understanding was negotiated between Berquentin and the homeowners. Earlier today, Mr. Flickinger corresponded with our attorney, and the agreement includes that they will commit to finalizing the memorandum of understanding within two weeks and prior to Monroeville Council's considering their plan.
Okay.
They agree that exhibits are going to be dated and referenced. They're going to use their best efforts with participation of ourselves and independent others to minimize the number of gates to be installed through the proposed sign wall and with the target being one. So, would, is that something you can confirm?
Yeah.
Okay, so Berquentin is confirming that the memorandum of understanding is being worked on, and with the understanding that it will be finalized inside of the next two weeks. Then the homeowners association does not oppose the application, moving on the council review and consideration.
Okay, very good. That sounds excellent.
Thank you.
I think it was an outcome we were all looking for. Is there any other comments in the room? Any concerns, any issues? Okay, you want to step up to the microphone?
If you want to step up, you need to sign in, please.
You need to step up to the microphone, please. We need for you to say your name and sign into the log sheet.
I'll send it.
It's not, this is not the right agenda.
Oh, that's me. Sorry.
If you're here for the Willow Crest Development, that will be, that will directly follow this application.
Yeah, yeah, we're on the Old Stone Village. Anyone regarding Old Stone Village? Any additional concerns? Please step up to the mic.
Sign in here. Lois Drumheller in Monroeville. Either mic. Hi. I was here last month, and not privy to anything that was discussed between what was clearly a homeowners association list of covenants, but I did last month have questions. So, the public looking at their televisions wouldn't have any idea what still might remain or, you know, was answered in an agreement. My concern last month with this development had to do with something I suspect that has been worked out, and that was, I think, at least six parking places, might have been building number four, that they were right into the S conservancy zone, and it didn't belong there. And has that been corrected?
Yes, we removed us.
Right.
And then I understand that you have a walking path that goes through, I'm going to just point to it, I know that the camera's not on this, but here you have a walking path going around here by building one, is it? Could you point to it?
It originally, originally came down through here, wrapped around, and back up. We've shortened it to over here, around, and back up.
So, does any of that go through the S conservancy zone?
Yes.
It does. And so you're constructing something in an S conservancy zone as part of your planned development?
I believe a trail, a walking trail is permitted.
Is permitted where?
In the conservancy zone.
Is that true?
We need to find out if the agreement is understood between the developer and the homeowners. I understand that that agreement and what's been held up has already been done.
We shortened it. We reduced the length of it.
Okay.
Moved it farther away from the Timberland Estates.
Per the request of the HOA.
Per their request.
Correct. The walking trail has been revised to the satisfaction of the homeowners association.
Okay.
I think what Ms. Drumheller's asking is, as per Monroeville zoning ordinance, is a walking trail permitted in the S conservancy? And it is. All of our parks are in S conservancy, and there are parking lots, roads, play apparatus, structures.
And that is, if I recall, something that is under municipal construction and then municipal maintenance? Is that right? When they do that in a park?
The parks are, yeah.
All right. So here you have something being constructed. It's not exactly like a park. Who has maintenance, and what kind of a trail is it? Is it a dirt trail, nature dirt trail, or actually is there paving?
No paving.
It would be a compacted or semi-compacted mulch trail.
Okay. So it's cleared, and it is, is there any land being moved in order to make this path? Thank you for explaining that. Now, the other thing I had grave concern over, which is an already troubling spot for anybody who's been around long enough and realized that when the Target Giant Eagle project went through, that there was quite an issue with the additional stoplight that would have come from, from Monroeville Boulevard with a left-hand turn lane. On the right, you have the Old Stone Church, and of course, you turn into a left-hand turn lane into the Giant Eagle parking lot. And if you take a look at this 426-unit planned residential development, that would appear to be something that would be heavily traveled in order to go back and forth into this development. And if so, that is not the type of road that I think was ever meant to be anything more than a path going through two major parking lots into, one being Target and two being the Giant Eagle. There have already been issues at that parking lot, and the turning in off of that light, and the fact that that curb cut is so close to the intersection of where Monroeville Boulevard and Stroshime Road are. The other entrance that would have to be made, would have to be traveling down Stroshime Road, going around the corner, past all the apartments, and then coming into the opposite end of where the light was and entering into the development that way. That road hasn't been defined very well in terms of how it's constructed, how much earth is moved in order to make that trek, and whether or not it is something that, since there is a lot of mine subsidence underneath there, is a concern on the safety of traveling and using a road to enter, to egress, ingress. So, if you have two entrances, and I think for something that's over 50 units, you have to have two exits, don't you?
I'm not exactly sure.
That should be in our, that should be in our ordinance. And that is something that I'm interested in for the next applicant, but, but in that case, if you've got a perfectly good road leading into a shopping center and a light that stacks, if you add more traffic onto that, you have to think very, very carefully here, because you want to have a safe entrance and exit into this unit, into the PRD. You really have to define a little bit better on what that looks like, how much earth is moved in order to get there, what traffic studies bear out. And I know you haven't done any traffic studies yet.
The traffic study was done by Trans Associates.
It's been reviewed.
And you've also had core samples taken, and I was told that you had them, but I didn't see any kind of result from those.
A geotechnical report was submitted to Monroeville for review as well.
Do you have that here with you tonight?
No, I did not bring that.
Okay, because I don't, I don't know what that showed because of all the concern of the unstable ground there. There's still some major concerns, not so much that the development is there. I would normally think this would be a great thing to have if you had a way of safely getting in and out and not causing any more problems than they originally had when they put that traffic light in. And those are big concerns for stacking back out into Monroeville Boulevard and to safely entering if you have another road. And I'd like to know how many members of the planning commission have traveled out there to take a look at the property. Have you all done that? I see a nod. Nod?
Not familiar with it.
Not familiar?
I'm familiar with the region.
Yes, yes.
Your concerns today are the same concerns of last month. Is that correct, ma'am?
Well, no, they don't really involve the six parking places being in the S conservancy, so that part I'm relieved of, but, and I understand the walking path.
I believe that was addressed. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it was. He just said that before.
All right.
But I am still concerned about the traffic study on these, on how this is affected. So it looks like somebody's going to explain that.
A gentleman here from Trans Associates has worked on.
Ah, Trans Associates, okay.
Sure. Hi, how are you? What's your name, sir?
Zach Staley of Trans Associates Engineering Consultants.
Zach Daly?
Staley, sorry.
Staley?
Staley, yes.
Thanks, Zach. Go ahead.
So, we did prepare a traffic study for this development in October 2023, and was most recently revised in June of 2024, where we received comments from the municipal engineering consultant. And since then, we have addressed their comments in regards to traffic impacts and at all, if not most, of the intersections, that there have been minor overall increases in traffic, but nothing that would substantiate any heavy impacts.
Okay.
Is that available online?
I don't know. I imagine that Paul...
You can get it through the municipality, submit it right to them.
So if I came to see you and sat down and took a look at it, you could explain the entire thing. Looks pretty thick. Okay, all right. And there's only one more thing that I don't think anybody on the commission asked, but I understand, maybe wrong, please educate me if I'm incorrect about this, but with a certain number of units in a PRD, there would be a certain portion of that development subsidized for low-income housing. Is that the case here?
No, that's not the requirement.
That, best of our knowledge, that is not the case, no.
That's not the case here? Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Anything else, ma'am?
Nope, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any concerns? Okay, I think this has been addressed well enough to satisfy the planning commission. The applicants, I believe, have agreed to the stipulations in their personal one-on-one meeting that was requested of them for last month. That all being said, I think we've come to a point where we need to seek a motion to approve the Old Stone Village so we can move forward.
Do a motion, request a motion for each item.
Okay.
So you'll need three.
All right, we can do that. Let's seek a motion for the first one, for 23-1-PRD. Seek a motion to approve, please.
All motion, all prayer. A second.
Okay, I heard a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion is passed. 23-1-PRD is passed. Let's go to the second one, 23-7-C. Let's seek a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Okay, we heard a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion has passed, 23-7-C. Last one, for Old Stone Village, 23-6-SUB. Seek a motion to approve.
All motion.
Second.
Okay, heard a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion is passed, 23-6-SUB.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for working together to make it, to make it happen. Appreciate it.
Okay, Paul, I think we're going to move forward with Willow Crest.
Okay, new business tonight, three items. 24-3ST Willow Crest. Applicant, Primo Land Group LLC, is requesting site plan approval pursuant to Article 3 of the Monroeville Zoning Ordinance Number 2779, to construct a single-family residential development consisting of 95 units and associated site amenities. The property is vacant and used, and used to be the airport located off Logan's Ferry Road and identified as tax parcel 741-R33 in the R2 single slash multifamily residential zoning district and consists of 46.62 acres. The second part of this application is 24-2-C. Applicant, Primo Land Group LLC, is requesting conditional use approval pursuant to Section 504VV, major excavation of the Monroeville Zoning Ordinance Number 2779, to permit a cut-and-fill operation totaling approximately 100,000 cubic yards of earth. The property is vacant and used to be the airport located off Logan's Ferry Road and identified as tax parcel 7441-R33 in the R2 single-family multifamily residential zoning district and consists of 46.62 acres. And finally, 24-5-SUB. Applicant, Primo Land Group LLC, is requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval to subdivide tax parcel 7441-R33 into 95 single-family lots and three open space parcels in the R2 single-family slash multifamily residential zoning district. The property is vacant and used to be the airport located off Logan's Ferry Road and consists of 46.62 acres. And the applicant has a PowerPoint presentation for us tonight.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, good evening. Your name, please?
Ed Moore, M-O-O-R-E, with Scheffler and Company.
Okay, Mr. Moore, did you sign the register?
I'll sign it before I leave.
All right. Whenever you're ready, sir.
Again, good evening. My name is Ed Moore with Scheffler and Company. We're the, we are the civil engineers for the project. Also with me tonight is Zach Staley with Trans Associates, who's the traffic engineer, and we also have Ryan Kossel with GeoMechanics, who is the geotechnical engineer. As Paul mentioned, the site is the site of the former airport.
Right.
Key planning considerations for the project were to avoid any streams, wetlands, or steep slopes, and then obviously to extend the existing streets into the property. We've extended Buttercup Drive, Quince Road, and also Hazel Nut Drive. And what this plan shows here is these are the lots, and the buildings are actually shown in blue. Some project notes, Project R2 Zoning, it's permitted use, residential permitted use, 46.62 total site area. We are proposing 95 single-family lots, which equates to two dwelling units per acre. We will have 15.75 acres of open space, that's roughly 34%. The construction will take place in two phases, both the earthwork and the home building, and the earthwork will balance on each site, on each phase by itself. As far as stormwater management is concerned, we're proposing three stormwater management basins, which you can see in the red. These stormwater basins are to control any increase in impervious runoff. They are designed to de-water and infiltrate within 48 hours of any rain event, which means there's no standing water in them.
Right.
And they will all be fenced. It will be fencing around each of them. Some of the amenities for the project...
Can you blow that up some? I mean, it's hard to orient with how it looks and where the roads are connected.
I don't know if you can do that on the PowerPoint. You might have to back out of it. Do you want to place this on the center? And then Jared, can you use the overhead camera to zoom in on this real quick? And Ed, just point out those three connection points.
Okay, so on this plan, this is Hazel Nut Drive coming in here?
That's coming up from Dahlia Drive?
Yes.
Okay.
And then this is Quince Road here?
Point out where the current road terminates and where the proposed road starts.
So basically, the proposed road is in the gray. So these roads, Hazel Nut terminates here, and that's where we pick it up. Quince Road, we pick up at this point here, and then Buttercup, we pick up at this point here, and it comes into the site this way.
I don't think that's correct.
That's not correct.
That's not correct. Where's Dahlia? Where's Dahlia on this map? Yeah.
Dahlia's off the map.
Dahlia's off the map?
Dahlia's off the map.
All right, let's try to stay on track here. Let Mr. Moore finish his presentation, and we're going to open, we're going to open up questions and so forth to the floor, and then we can discuss that.
It's just easier to follow if you got the map up there and talking from the map.
We can't hear. People need to come to the microphones.
We got you, Jared. Just, we're going to let Ed finish his presentation, and then everybody will have a chance to speak and use the map on the dais there, and we can, we can zoom in and out and answer questions.
So to keep going, there's a mailbox cluster that is located in this area here, where it's a single area where everyone will get their mail. The proposed plan has sidewalks and street trees on each side of the street. There will be lighting at the intersections and the back of the cul-de-sacs, and we will have some improvements to Greenleaf Park. We're going to repave the basketball courts there, add mobile pickleball nets, and paint the courts themselves. As I mentioned, the project consists in two phases. Phase one was 30 lots, and it's roughly 10 and a half acres. Phase two will consist of 65 lots, and it's just a little over 36 acres. Some images of the homes that are being proposed. While there's not an actual builder that's been selected at this time, we're anticipating the homes will look something like these units here, and there will be a homeowners association.
Okay.
Now to talk a little bit about traffic, I'll turn it over to Zach.
Good evening again. My name is Zach Staley, Trans Associates. Overall, the overall study area for the Willow Crest development, as seen on screen, involved or included six intersections, one being Garden City Drive with Dahlia Drive.
Can you point to that?
Is there any way I can blow this up?
I don't know how your PowerPoint works. I think you have to use and pop the slide out as if it was an individual PDF.
Can you see, can the eyes see the mouse cursor as it moves on screen? No? Yeah? Okay. Garden City Drive, as I was saying, and Dahlia Drive being number one. Garden City Drive and Evergreen Drive, number two. William Penn Highway and Garden City Drive, number three. Blueberry Road and Buttercup Drive. Quince Road with Blueberry Road and Dahlia Drive with Hazel Nut Drive. Three of these intersections were analyzed for capacity analysis or to analyze level service and delays attributed with the project. And the other three intersections, being internal to the site and off the main roadway corridor, were analyzed for site distance evaluation. Turning movement counts at the three intersections I mentioned earlier were performed in the morning from 7:00 to 9:00, and evening from 4:00 to 6:00, and these times typically reflect the weekday peak hours of traffic. These count locations and times were pursued to the scope of study prescribed by the Monroeville's engineering consultant in which we... in which we had discussions with before performing the study to gain their approval. And the counts were performed in March twenty-twenty-four while school was in session. Site distance measurements at the three internal intersections, being Blueberry Road with Buttercup Drive, Quince Road with Blueberry Road, and Dahlia Drive with Hazelnut Drive were performed. And these calculations utilize the posted speed limit or a speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour with roads without posted speed limit. And as a result of this evaluation, acquit site distance is available at the existing site intersections. As far as trip generation goes, there are ninety-five single-family homes proposed. As such, we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which is the national standard for trip generation for different land uses. And based on these calculations, the proposed development is projected to project, excuse me, nine-hundred-and-sixty-four daily trips, seventy-one AM trips, and ninety-five PM peak hour trips. Our findings and capacity analysis resulted in currently poor levels of service at Old William Penn Highway with Garden City Drive, where the overall intersection currently operates at level service E, which is considered poor levels of service, with the eastbound and westbound approach also failing during the peak hours. All other intersections are anticipated to operate no worse than level service B, which is acceptable. And it's important to note that Old William Penn Highway with Garden City Drive is considered a future failing unsignalized intersection according to the Monroeville Comprehensive Plan, which proposes multiple recommendations for improvements, including auxiliary turn lanes on the eastbound and westbound approaches and a traffic signal by the municipality. In regards to how this development will affect local streets, Quince Road is expected during the peak hours of traffic to have one additional vehicle every minute or one and a half minutes. So during the highest peak of the day, there's gonna be an additional car once every minute and a half. Buttercup Drive, there's gonna be twenty-four additional vehicles during the AM and thirty-two during the PM. And that equivalents to one additional vehicle every two minutes or less, or two minutes or more, excuse me, to two and a half minutes during the worst peak of the day. And then Hazelnut Drive, your, Hazelnut Drive is expected to gain additional vehicle every minute and a half during the worst times of the day. And relative to traffic impacts, these increases in traffic are considered negligible to minor increases in traffic. And in conclusion, the study found the proposed development ultimately had no significant impact on traffic operations in the study area. Traffic signal control is essentially warranted at Old William Penn and Garden City Drive under no build conditions, which is what the Comprehensive Plan stated. And there are no improvements recommended for this off-site intersection. However, for those intersections internal, off the major roadway corridors, there are stop signs recommended on what would be the minor approaches at Buttercup Drive and Blueberry Road, Blueberry Road and Quince Road, and then Hazelnut Drive and Dahlia Drive. And these would be installed by the municipality. And then after preparation of this study, or after this presentation, we did receive a letter from H R G on May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four as a response to our study. They said that H R D, H R G deems the study as presented to be acceptable, and they have no further comments to be addressed. So at this time, they have no
Concerns.
No concerns about this traffic study. Thank you.
Are you through?
Yes, sir. Next up is Ryan, who will talk about the geotechnical investigation.
Okay. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. How are you?
Good. Your name, please?
Ryan Kossel. I'm a project engineer for GeoMechanics.
Okay, Ryan, whenever you're ready, sir.
Sure. So I'm also here to talk about the Willow Crest development. We performed a detailed geotechnical investigation throughout the site, as per every site. We found this site to be unique and interesting, partly due to the fact that it is both deep-mined and strip-mined. For those in layman's terms, there's coal underneath the surface, and in some areas, it's been mined at surface elevation, and other areas, it's been mined down well below the surface.
Okay.
So we did borings at different locations to pick up the roadways, the cut-and-fill embankments, and stormwater management ponds. We, after we performed our test borings in the field, we came back. We correlated them onto geotechnical cost sections to show the geology of the site. That'll show the depths of cuts, the heights of fills, what the soil looks like at each location, whether, what impacts, whether it's soil, whether it's rock, whether there's coal. To summarize our findings, based on not only our test borings, but our thorough geologic research, the area in orange is roughly the area that's been deep-mined, while the area in pink is roughly the area that has been strip-mined. Now, the area in pink, when you strip mine the soil, it gets put back in elite, very little compactive effort, very poor soil conditions, very soft, very loose, easy to consolidate when you build on. Therefore, these soils need some form of improvement in order to make them suitable. We worked through several iterations. We provided recommendations for an example of a dynamic compaction to densify the soil in place, to stabilize this ground, which would then make this ground suitable to build your structures on, no problem. The area in orange would require a deep-mine stabilization, which would result in a specialty contractor coming out. They would drill at each individual lot. You'd drill roughly fifteen to twenty holes down to the mine elevation and inject grout concrete mixture to sort of fill in the mine cavity. Therefore, there's no risk of mine subsidence.
Mine collapsing.
Yes.
Right.
And once that's complete, you'd be able to build your structures on there, no problem. This picture right here is roughly an example of the grid pattern that we've used for an individual lot. Roughly fifteen holes per lot spaced twenty to twenty-five feet. This typical would vary if the lots aren't perfectly square, but you would get about that many. And each of these lots, I believe, the depth to coal ranges from as little as thirty feet, twenty-five to thirty feet on the outskirts of the site, to up to seventy feet at the highest point, which would be the old airport runway itself. The limits of the strip mine area roughly coincide with the limits of the phase one as proposed by Scheffler. So that would be taken care of to begin with. There would be no dynamic compaction or densification of the soils as part of phase two. But the deep-mine stabilization would occur simultaneously for phase one, likely at the beginning of the project. Therefore, everything is taken care of at one time. The limited number of test borings is justified by the fact that we're going back in doing many holes to the mine level during the mine stabilization process, which would therefore give us more in-depth information as far as the soil conditions, the thickness of the rock, the conditions of the rock, and the conditions of the mine.
Ryan, let, let me ask you this.
Yes.
Very quickly, what was the product that you had mentioned when it comes to stabilizing the strip area to reinforce so that the mine would not collapse and so forth? You said you would inject it with, with some sort of a, of a product. Was that, is that just straight concrete or cement? What, what are we looking at?
It's usually a concrete. It could be a grout mix. It could be a concrete mix. You could dump stone down into the hole. There's several different options depending on the condition of the mine itself.
What, what you're, what he's asking is what we're gonna put down there. We're gonna use grout through superior concrete, like we've done in other sites. They inject it down into the
Okay, hold, hold on, please. Let, let, let the client. I understand. Just be patient. We're gonna have you speak, okay?
Usually, it's a hand-mixed grout with fly ash and Portland cement, water. And then if you need something thicker, they'll truck in concrete to fill in heavier voids.
And what's the longevity of that type of product?
It usually lasts for good.
Okay, so it's not that it'll
It's not that it's something that's gonna go away in twenty years.
Break away, right, as time goes on?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Please, if you have more, please continue.
I believe that's everything I have on my end, so.
I had a question about the grouting.
Go ahead.
You mentioned grouting under the structures. Do you also intend to grout underneath the roads that will be accepted by the municipality?
If need be, yes.
Okay. Make sure that gets put into the Geotech report, because we, we're gonna wanna see some kind of reassurance that the road isn't gonna collapse if we're gonna accept the road. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've received review letters from the township, or sorry, municipality engineer, Garvin Bauer Bietko. We're addressing their comments as we speak.
Okay. All righty. Does the panel have any additional questions or concerns?
Was the applicant done with their presentation? Yeah, that's all we have for tonight, just to finalize things. We're in receipt of several review letters from the municipality and their consultants. We're working on those. There's nothing in there that we can't address. We're working on those now, and we'll resubmit the revised plans as necessary.
Okay. Anybody have any questions either on the panel? If not, I'm gonna open a questioning up to the floor. If you have any concerns about Willow Crest, please step up to the mic. Need for you to sign your name and, uh, sign your name and address your concern, please. Thank you. Hi, how are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Okay, your name, sir?
Scott Belay.
Okay, whenever you're ready, Scott.
Yes, sir. Okay. My name's Scott Belay. Been a resident in Monroeville for sixty-three years. My family's background in real estate. We've done multiple developments, Willow Hedge, for an example. First thing, I'm gonna state I'm disappointed in Monroeville.
Okay.
Nobody notified us about this meeting till Monday. I own property that abuts this property.
Okay.
And it was my tenant that called me to tell me. No letters, no calls, nothing. It's just like, hey, we're pushing forward without telling the public. And I think a lot of these people would agree with that. And I don't even know these people.
Okay, I understand. I understand.
Okay? My house is on Hazelnut Drive.
Okay.
It's the last one on the left. Four thirteen Hazelnut?
Four thirteen.
I forget.
How long have you been in Monroeville?
Sixty-three years. No, I don't live in it. I live on the other side of Monroeville in Monoslo.
Oh, please, continue.
I actually live in the house I grew up in. House is at the end of Hazelnut. It's a dead end.
Right.
As Buttercup is, as Quince is. You're talking about changing the quality of life for all those people on that road. And you need to take that seriously. I mean, you guys work for the people of Monroeville, not for the borough. That's gonna change all those neighborhoods. It's gonna change how kids go out in the road and play. Okay? When this airport rezoning project took place, my understanding was the rezoning was gonna be, so all traffic either comes off Logan's Ferry Road or comes through Maple Crest. You have access through Maple Crest. I've driven through that plan. The plan all along was to build off the Maple Crest development up over the hill onto the airport property. Why isn't that in this plan? I don't know. I mean, none of these guys put this forward in the plan. I think it's terrible. Second thing, this traffic guy talks about, this traffic guy talks about Old Twenty-two. And the Monroeville Comprehensive Plan states it needs upgrades. It's a super-busy road. I have multiple units in Garden City. You drive down Old Twenty-two, you have to wait at those stop signs quite a bit. He said the Comprehensive Plan says it needs red lights. It needs turning lanes. I don't see anything planned for that. I don't see these guys paying for it. You guys gotta take that into consideration. You're gonna throw a lot more traffic into Garden City. It's not fair to the people there. I don't live there. But I know, I'm over there all the time. Not fair. I think the last thing, and I'm gonna say this again, I think the way the rezoning of the airport was handled over the years was terrible. It should have been rezoned for single-family homes. I'm all for that. I'm all for development in Monroeville. I'm all for increasing our tax base. But do it in a planned way. Do it a way that makes sense. This doesn't make sense. You're gonna ruin these people's communities. And that's, that's not good. Last is the developer that's putting the senior citizens home. These properties are but mine. They made commitments to me in the last year to cut trees down. They never did it. Now they won't even return my calls. You got a similar developer coming in here wanting to do this stuff. And it abuts my property, which is still owned by Clover Communities. I don't trust them. That's what I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name and sign in, please.
Hi, I did. I'm Nicole Kelly. I live on Buttercup.
Nicole.
With a lot of people here. I don't know everybody, but I know my neighbors. I can honestly say, and I wrote it all down because this is very disturbing, just like the gentleman said, ruining our communities that we've built, that we've lived in, that our kids play in. My kids grew up on Buttercup. They played on Buttercup. They were safe on Buttercup. I know that, that the wealthy people of Monroeville and the rich, the people, people that have money put gates in their community so this can't be done. We're all working people, and we sustain our community. We have our kids on this street, and I can't even tell you the joy it is to be able to see all these kids, plus the other kids in the neighborhood, play on the street. They're safe. They sit on the side of the road, have popsicles, have parties, have waters, have races. And they're safe, because our ten-house community is safe. And everyone on that street watches out for these kids. When you open up these roads, you're opening up the possibility of our kids getting hit by cars, kidnappings. I don't care what you say, this world is not a great place. But we're gonna open it up for our kids to be hurt, to be taken, to be trafficked, to be in a hospital, because one extra car every minute isn't a big deal. Yes, it is. Twenty-five miles an hour on Buttercup, that's like going seventy miles an hour on Twenty-two. It's dangerous, and it's irresponsible. Most of the people here bought our houses because of the neighborhood and because of the cul-de-sac, because we know everybody, because it's safe. And, you know, just like my significant other sits in this, in the front window, and he says he's the neighborhood watch. Nothing gets by him. These kids know that he's in the, in the, in this, in the window watching him, huh? He was watching all these kids. How, how are they getting in there now? Like the gentleman before us said, that was our, the understanding that was always put out there. Now suddenly, it's backdoored. The tiny communities, the cul-de-sacs, we're gonna break through those. We're gonna tear down everything there just to make, make it easier. And why do you need to do it? And what about all the debris, all the dust? The kids can't even be outside and playing, all the vehicles going up in there. And I can't honestly imagine if any of you would want this running through your neighborhood. And if you do say you did, I don't believe you. And it would be for a monetary gain. And I find it really interesting that this new development's gonna have a lot of cul-de-sacs. That's great. That's great, because you're tearing up ours to give to yours. I think that's fantastic. I think that's fantastic for you. I'm just asking for all of you to really think about the community, the neighbors, and the safety of our children before you make an irresponsible and detrimental decision.
Thank you so much. We do appreciate it. Anyone else, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll do it first. Oh, there's quite a few.
Just try to limit our concerns to five minutes, please.
Sorry, sign in. I'm Julia Feeny.
What's her name, please?
Julia Feeny. Like boy means rural, Mr. Feeny. But I stay on Buttercup.
Okay.
I have six kids. I have the most kids up there. They play outside in front. Ages is sixteen, fourteen, thirteen, ten, nine, about to be seven. They play basketball. We race with them. We play football there with them. We play basketball. That's their only play, playground unless we take them to the playground.
I understand.
Having cars back and forth is already tight. My kids get picked up in front of the house from a school bus. So just imagine if that road opens up, school bus is not gonna be able to stop. It's gonna be so much traffic. There's a lot of elderly people there, too. And I'm sure they probably couldn't make it. But what I'm trying to say is, kids play there. I moved there for a reason because it's the cul-de-sac. I feel safe there. My kids feel safe to run in the street because why? There's only eight neighbors. We know each other. We know when they come and go. They know when they come and go. They wave, they speak, you know? People look out for my kids. And if they open it up, where are my kids gonna play at? That, that traffic is gonna be too much, too much. There's one way in there and one way out. And the stoplights, the whatever that they was talking about, I mean, it sounds like a good plan, but don't open the cul-de-sacs up and have all that traffic and then all these stops like, the kids walk to this bus stop already. Can you just imagine a lot of kids walking down to the bus stop in that traffic on? They don't, people don't stop nowadays.
People don't even pay attention.
Like, people don't pay attention. These are kids. We all work. But like I, like I said, my kids get picked up in front of the, in front of the house from a school bus. Y'all have kids? If y'all do, y'all see where I'm coming from a lot. But, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The microphone right here, please.
Okay. Hello, my name's on the list. My name is Tambri Iriti.
What is it again, please?
Tambri Iriti. I-R-I-T-I. I have been a resident of Monroeville for forty-nine years. I went to Gateway. I used to live about a mile from where I live now. I lived on Buttercup for nine years. And you talk about the eight houses. We all have Ring cameras. We all talk to each other. We're safe for each other. We all look out for everybody around. It's a quiet, safe street with lots of wildlife in the backyards. And no one's even talked about what it's gonna do to the wildlife, which I'm...
That's very true.
I'm really, I work with a lot of animal rescue and like the Wildlife Center in Verona. And I can tell you that there's a lot of wildlife back there that I am personally concerned about. The kids do play on the street. And I have to honestly say, I'm fifty-nine years old and sometimes it bothers me that the kids are playing on the street. But then I look at, kids are playing on the street. They're not inside playing on their Xbox or whatever. They're outside playing like kids used to do a long time ago. And you're gonna take that away from them. That upsets me, even though I would love to live on a quiet street, plus community, and not have to deal with children because that's just where I'm at in my life. My daughter's graduating from college. So I've come tonight on behalf of the children because I think it's unfair to them to do that to them. And I wasn't aware if there was any access to Logan's Ferry. That won't be true, correct? It's all cul-de-sacs? There won't be any access on Logan's Ferry at all. And they are building all those apartments back there, too. Um, just some other comments. Buttercup is a very narrow street. I could pull it up on my Ring if you'd wanna see it. And there's ten children that live on that street. In eight houses, there's ten children. That play on the street. Things I thought of is if this has to go through, can you make a playground for the children to play in? Can you make something fun for them to do? Put that in your plan that these children would have somewhere to go if you guys approved of it? I mean, I know, I live in Monroeville and I like progress because, of course, it's great. I'm glad we're getting a Ross Dress for Less here. I'm glad to see new homes being built in the area. Because I know it does increase the value of other homes. But it's about the kids. And these kids play. And the kids on other streets that this affects, they play too. So that's all I have to say. But I just think you should really consider a lot of things before you approve this. Thank you.
I do. Thank you so much for your time. Let me, let me just say, let me just say a few things here before we move forward. I, I certainly wanna make it very clear that, you know, I support the community, the residents' feedback, and I know we're all concerned about the most important thing. Certainly our children, the growth, their security, and, and stability. I just want it to be known, you know, that we are a recommending body and we try to do the very best that we can here. And I think what my recommendation would be is depending on how the voting takes place, that with us being the recommending body, that you will be able to continue to voice your opinion and/or other concerns to council. And any other type of revisions, maybe we can all come to the meeting of the mines where they would want an additional playground or some other type of amenities in there to keep the children safe. And I'm certainly proud of our police department. I'm sure all of us are. I'm sure they're gonna do a fantastic job patrolling the new areas and so forth. So I, I just want you to keep in mind that, you know, we are here. We do hear your voices. And we wanna do the best for everyone here. But it's important, as the last resident said here, that we move forward with ongoing development, continuing to make Monroeville a beautiful place. It's a fantastic place to live, a great school district. And I, I just want you to know that. That's important to me as the chairman here, that you understand that we are here for the people and we're here to do the best that we can for all parties. So is there anyone else that would like to say just, just a few minutes? We, okay?
I'll make a real quick here.
Okay.
My name is Mr. Dallas.
What is your name, please?
Jim Dallas. I live right at the end, I'm signed in. I live right at the end of Buttercup. So this affects me directly.
Okay, Jim.
Okay? I'm not, I'm not against a development up there, okay? I'm against the size of the development and in the way the roads are gonna come in. And I'd like to see, if they're gonna build houses, right now they're gonna build houses right next to me. I'd like to see buffer zones on where the houses are.
Sure.
I'd like to see some green area. I'd like to see some parks, some trails. I mean, that other development, they had some concessions that they made. I'd like to see that happen. Like the concessions. And she's talked about the wildlife, that there is a lot of wildlife up there.
Sure.
There's all kinds of animals running through the yard.
Absolutely.
So, you know, that's what I'm worried about. And, and the road is way too narrow for that type of traffic. Right now, we got delivery trucks coming up there. We have Amazon, we got FedEx, we got UPS, and they can barely get up the street because the road is just too narrow. And I would actually like to see a cul-de-sac put at the end of our street so these trucks can turn around. Because I use my driveway to turn around all the time. That's a concern. Nobody's talked about the new development on, uh, between the Parkway and Old William Penn Highway, those townhouses that they're building. And then they also just built that complex off of Evergreen, all the traffic. And that's increasing the traffic flow on Old William Penn Highway. Now getting out of that intersection is gonna be really tough. And that, that traffic study he's done, he's probably done it before that development's put in. Once those houses get put in, there's gonna be more, more traffic. There's just too much traffic. These roads can't handle it. This, this development was built in the late fifties, early sixties. Here's two thousand twenty-four.
Okay.
It's just not gonna work.
I understand.
Okay?
Thank you, Jim.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Let me also, let me also say this, just very brief. I'd, I'd love to sit here and we can go through each and every one, but I'm just gonna make it a point to, to say here that everyone that's sitting in this room right now is not happy with this. And, and I'm gonna acknowledge that. Okay, so, you know, we, we're gonna let, let that for the record known that you're not happy with this. But at some point, we're gonna have to cut off all the public speaking so that we can move forward with a vote and so forth. Okay, but please, you're here. Sign in and...
I'm already signed in. My name is Charlotte Milner.
What is it?
Char, C-H-A-R, Charlotte.
Excuse me, can we have quiet, please? All right, I'm sorry. Can you repeat your name, please?
Yes, Charlotte Milner. I live in the corner of Quincy and Valley View.
Okay.
In fact, my parents had my home built in nineteen fifty-five and they were the very first residents of this immediate area. When my dad bought the land, he was told that there would be no throughway on Quincy. And now here we are. Secondly, yesterday I was blindsided when my neighbor informed me of this ludicrous proposal to open our no-outlet roadway. Just like the gentleman said, where was our notification? You here as the municipality of Monroeville had a fiduciary responsibility to notify each of us residents who would be directly impacted. For sixty-nine years, we have enjoyed a safe and quiet neighborhood. Your proposal will significantly increase traffic. Our property values will decrease. Our safety, as everybody clearly has indicated, will decrease. Many people purchase their homes based on the fact that it's, it's a dead-end street. This municipality can't control the speeding vehicles that we currently have now. Nobody stops at our stop signs. I exercise in the neighborhood and it's, it's, it's a very risky challenge to cross the street at the high rate of speed at which cars are traveling. So now I'm hearing about all this information. Everybody is cognizant of this going on. And now, just recently, I'm just hearing that there is not gonna be any access point off of Logan's Road. What the heck? These people that, that purchase this, I guess it's Primo Land Group, first I'm hearing this, hey, that's their prerogative. Good for you. You bought a piece, parcel of land of the, of the airport. Good for you. The access point has always been Logan's Ferry Road. For you now to impose on our neighborhoods for your development? I'm sorry, that's not gonna fly. We have been here first. And then now, this gentleman back here is trying to talk about level two, whatever, whatever. That's sixty cars per hour on my street. Excuse my French, but hell, no. This is not gonna jive. For sixty-nine years, the road has been closed. Just because some Johnny come lately wants to go ahead and, and establish their housing complex, do it. Don't involve us. I respect everything you people are saying and you keep saying nice things. You're hearing us, but I think you're just pacifying us. We, I don't want you, oh, okay, coddling us. Listen to us. Sixty-nine years we've been here. Johnny come latelys, sorry, when you purchased the land, you knew damn well the access point was Logan's Ferry. You should not involve us in your development. Have at it, develop to your heart's content. Do not take over Quincy Road, which ultimately affects Buttercup. And then what's, what's this about a homeowners association? Is that gonna affect us? If you're connecting my street, where does the buck stop? Are you gonna make us now pay a homeowners association?
I don't believe that would be the case, ma'am.
Well, you know, we don't believe a lot of things. I can't believe that I was not informed of this major impact and hardship of our neighborhood. Where is the posting? Where is, I mean, there's laws out there for a reason. There's no newspaper articles. If my neighbor didn't tell me, I would be ignorant and I would not be here. Most of my neighbors probably are not here because we don't know. And I was the original tenant of this community. My house was the original tenant.
Paul, let me ask you something. By any chance, was this, uh, project, was it posted on Monroeville's website that...
The agenda was. The legal notification goes out for the council meeting, not for the planning commission meeting. So the letters haven't been sent yet. They get sent out for the council meeting.
Well, geez. Well, after, after you're gonna accept the proposal?
Already, ready to approve and nobody knows about it.
No way in hell do I, do we want our roads opened.
Didn't you used to post them up on telephone poles?
Yes, I mean, right.
For the council meeting.
Yes, I mean, kindly, put some notification out. We're not on social media. I'm not on social media for my privacy. And then if she didn't tell me, I would be ignorant to the fact. And I'm the original...
All right, let's, let's, let's keep it calm, please.
This is just, it's a sham. There's a sham. Sixty cars per hour is the estimate, not this one car per, per minute. Do the math, people. It's sixty cars an hour.
Exactly.
That is way too many for these children.
Yep.
Okay.
I sit on my front porch, one out of ten people will stop at the stop sign.
No one stops.
So no. The answer is no. Your, your development, take it someplace else or utilize Logan's Ferry. You know, you know damn well, when you, when you purchase your property, the access point was Logan's Ferry. Beautiful. Stick to it. Do not involve us.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. You've had your five minutes. Thank you.
I'll just make a point here. The access to Logan's, the access to Logan's Ferry was removed by the residents of Willow Hedge. When the Clover development was approved, the residents on Willow Hedge required the developer of Clover to never use that road in the future. Because those three roads were always designed to be extended to service this property. Yes, they were.
One at a time, please. One at a time. One at a time.
You can't speak in the audience. If, when you come up to here, I can speak to you so that it's on record.
Sir, do you wanna come to the mic and speak?
No, I don't wanna come to speak.
Okay.
What you're, what you're saying right now will not be on record because you're not at the microphone. If you have something to say, you have to go up to the microphone.
Please sign in and state your name.
My name is Deborah Becker and I live at four forty-seven Valley View Drive.
Okay, Ms. Becker, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. First, I wanna thank everyone for listening. The thing I love about being a resident of Monroeville is the passion. Clearly, this is our community. I have built my career as a woman in Pittsburgh sports because I started out as the two thousand two Gateway Gator mascot. And I, I, I take a lot of pride in that. I do. And I'm saying this because, hi Jared, I know Jared, by the way, because I also worked at the Monroeville Jazz Fest as the TV personality. Throwing that out there, but also, yeah, as a longtime resident of Monroeville, as I said, I've built my career in Pittsburgh sports hailing Monroeville. If you go to shop.steelers.com, you will see in my profile, I came, I came in to the love of Pittsburgh sports because it started being the Gateway Gator mascot. Now I'm sharing this with all of you because it is important to note that, yes, this is my little girl. She's only five years old. As I said, we live on four forty-seven Valley View. So we are connected to Quince. We are connected to Buttercup, you know, and yes, there are a lot of kids in the area. You've heard it over and over again. The cars, they do not stop. But aside from that, I need you to understand that houses, as the gentleman back here has mentioned, on Valley View, we have lots of problems with mine subsidence and mine water. There was a lovely resident by the first name of Shirley, who recently passed, that lived kind of adjacent to us at four forty. She always had problems with mine subsidence and mine water. And I don't think, you guys, I'm sorry, you have not looked at all of the other land and property surrounding that area. It's going to be nothing but trouble for Monroeville. It's going to be nothing but trouble for these residents, for us, because it is old land. It was, our houses were built in the fifties. It's just, you're just asking for disaster on your hands. You're going to have houses that are, like, we have a crack in our ceiling. It's absolutely terrible. And the fact that we did not find out about this, we were told that, oh, it might be on the Monroeville website. I found out because my neighbor saw it on Facebook. And you need to think about the other residents of the community that don't utilize social media. There are, I mean, yes, I am, I'm forty years old, and so I have a little bit familiarity with technology. But there are residents that do not. And we were not properly informed of this. And I am upset. I am upset as a loyal resident of Monroeville, of this community, and putting Monroeville in the spotlight when I'm able to, that we were not given the fair treatment that we deserve in this community.
Okay.
And I do hope that this gentleman will speak to add more about the mine subsidence and mine issues that happen in Garden City.
Thank you, Deborah.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Good.
My name is Joe Brandt. I live on corner of Quince and Valley View.
Okay.
Okay.
What was your first name again, please?
Joe Joseph Brandt. B-R-A-N-D-T. They're talking about the mine under the airport. I work in the mine. We undermine all that property. Now, there is water from that mine going down on a Valley View. There are houses that have a problem, water leaking under. They're going to start building and drilling and putting whatever filler they're going to do in that mine. It's just going to expand the pressure on the water, and it's going to get even worse. And I don't know how deep, when you drill, how deep were the holes? Mine, how deep is the mine?
You'll need to step to the microphone.
The mine is about seventy feet from the airport runway and about thirty feet from, what's the southernmost road here? Near Hazel Nut, it's about thirty feet.
It's the underground mine?
Yes. It's not, it's been strip mined down here.
Strip mined? I mean, I'm talking about the underground mine.
Underground.
How deep is that mine?
Up here on the new Buttercup, it's about seventy feet, and it gets lesser as you move in either direction.
Then, I don't know, if you're talking seventy feet mine, because we were under the ground, starting in Unity, on five hundred feet, and we went miles underground, and it came through after, what was, three eighty? Old Logan's, no.
Everywhere you go, it's a different depth.
And it was over there, I bet, at least over hundred feet had to be.
Yes, it'll be very deep in other spots, but at this certain spot, it's only seventy feet.
We mined all the coal we could get. That means you won't be able to fill with little hole, all the spaces. There were twenty, twenty-five, twenty-eight feet wide entries, and five entries in each section, and we mined therefore, no, I started in seventy-two, they shut it down in eighty-nine. So that, all that place is undermined. That's why all that water is just filled with the water. Once you start drilling and putting pressure on it, those houses below, that's all they're going to do, is getting the water in them. That's what's going to happen.
While you're there, do you want to explain how the grouting works? It creates pyramids underneath the mine ceiling to keep it from collapsing, and the distance between the mine holes, and how it will not create pressure on the water?
So, you're absolutely correct. There is water down in the mine.
Yeah, it's flooded. It's all flooded, I know that.
Yes, we are well aware of that, and that is a common occurrence. So when you inject this, it will either soak up the water or will disperse the water. The idea-
There's a natural spring under there.
Let him finish. He'll explain all that.
Whether or not there is a natural spring, that's unrelated to the mine. Natural springs occur in the soil or rock outside the mine. Yes, but for the mine itself, the idea is, can you put this PowerPoint back up? So at each of these red dots, we drill a hole, and you inject the grout. And this grout builds pyramids and builds columns down in there to-
From the mine floor to the mine ceiling?
The mine is about anywhere five feet to eight feet to, if it collapses, ten feet.
It all depends where you mine.
Sometimes you couldn't stand up in it, sometimes the roof collapsed a little bit.
That mine mostly was seven to twelve feet.
Yeah.
It's all depends.
Yes, I agree with you. And so you fill this up, and it creates a column there. And it stiffens the rock that's above the mine. It fills in any of those cracks, and then it stabilizes the open area, and it stabilizes anything that's collapsed between when you mined it and now. Fills that up so that this ground does not settle underneath this specific lot.
I don't know that one hole is going to hold that whole-
It's not every fifteen feet, there will be a column. So there's going to be two thousand columns under these homes?
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to do fifteen, fifteen times ninety-five, plus if we're doing the roadways.
You just round it to a hundred.
Yeah.
That's fifteen hundred right there.
As long, once those people start, what you call subsidizing everything, the homes, like they are in those old coal mine towns, homes start going down, then it's going to be too late.
Well, that's why we do this ahead of time.
Yeah, I know.
Because back in the day, they weren't aware of all of this. This is within the last twenty or so-
So the houses that were built back in the day? How are they going to survive?
Ma'am, you have to come to the microphone, please.
Can you please advise what the failure rate is on everything that you just explained?
On the current development? Or your houses?
On your product. On your product, but yes, can you also please explain how, okay, so you're going to drill in, and you're going to fill everything with concrete and grout or whatever material it is? What is the success rate? What's the failure rate? And then also, what does that mean for all of us who have houses that were built in the fifties? I mean, you're building like thirty, fifty feet away? Like, our houses are going to shake and crumble. This is what I'm talking about.
No, your houses will not shake.
There's no shaking and crumbling with this drilling.
We're not going to feel a thing, I'm sure. No. You guys, you're just saying that, like, you have no idea. You don't live there.
I've experienced standing from me to you with this drill rig, and you don't feel the ground.
Okay, so you don't feel anything. But again, so all the houses that do have problems with mine subsidence and problems with mine water, houses that are built near natural springs, so please explain to us, how does that-
The reason you have problems-
This will not impact your house negatively. If your house was built with no mine stabilization, that's why you could be experiencing subsidence.
Okay, but still, with this development, you mean to tell me that you're going to go in there and you're going to drill fifty, what do you say, fifty, thirty feet away? And that's not going to affect our houses whatsoever? Because I strongly disagree.
If anything, it would help you.
Yeah, if you're thirty feet away-
Because it's going to stabilize the mine.
It would disperse in the mine area and fill in to help stabilize beneath the house.
I'd like to, I'm sorry, I'm not following you, because Valley View, and please, back me up, residents, like, Valley View where we live, we're kind of like below Buttercup. In fact, I think I can look into some of your backyards.
Maybe you're in the strip mine area. I'd have to look at exactly where your house is. I don't know, per se. I just know this specific site. But like, down here, it's been strip mined. Go ahead.
Okay, so this is-
This is Hazel Nut, and this is-
So this is not right. This is Dahlia. That's the other thing. You guys are coming in here and not giving us accurate information.
No, that's not Dahlia.
How is it? How is this not Dahlia? This is Quincy? It's not Quincy?
It's Quince. They have a typographical error on them.
I understand, but I mean, like, let's clean it up here. I mean, this is a board meeting, is it not? Council meeting? I'm not trying to be rude here, but it's also to make it easier to understand for all those residents.
You won't be able to see this, but I'll show you. This is Dahlia.
It helps to look on Google Maps. It really does.
Is there internet on these laptops to Google Maps?
Right, there's Quince.
You should be able to get online.
Okay, so it's, so you're telling me that it's going to-
Am I able to?
This is Quince. This is Quince. Buttercup. Buttercup. Hazel Nut. Hazel Nut. Dahlia's over here.
So, I'm still not quite following.
Dahlia.
No, I understand, yes.
Dahlia's off the map. This section of the property is this property.
Okay, so-
Hazel Nut's just that, what, eight-house street?
Oh, he's got a bigger map there.
You want to look on Google here? You're talking about Dahlia, and then Hazel Nut's just this little strip.
So I, like, right in here.
Yeah, this tree area.
So we're down here. So this is what I'm saying, like, there's going to be issues with, yeah. We're going to have crumbling houses. We're going to have houses that suffer. Houses and families that suffer from this development. That's what I hope everyone here can understand. I'm not trying to be emotional here. I'm trying to be practical and reasoned. You are going to have residents that have problems with the physical nature of their house. It is, it's true.
The mine grouting won't affect anybody outside the development.
I want to just say one thing here. Come up here real quick.
If you could just state your name again.
Here's what I suggest you guys should do.
What's your name again, please?
Jim Dallas.
Okay, thank you.
I've been resident about almost forty years. My suggestion is to take this plan, take it back to the planning table, redesign it, bring it back to you guys. Because it's really not, nobody's in agreement with it. Go take our considerations in there, get a new design, bring it back. That's what I suggest.
All right, I think we're in the right direction here. Why don't we do this so that we can address the community's concerns and so forth that they have? I'm going to seek for a motion to table this so that we can be able to see if any type of additional agreements or so forth can be made, if anything can be done to try to satisfy your needs. But we also want to stay on track with the development. You have to understand that.
So you're basically saying it's already a done deal, but let's table it so we can address-
Hold on, I'd just like to say one thing.
All right, hold on, one at a time, please. One at a time.
Start from the beginning. I've done developments in Monroeville. I did the developments back in the day when Monroeville, your panel was anti-development. Brutal process to go through.
Okay.
Okay, that's changed. That tide changed. I think that's good. Okay, and you guys have a job to do. But when I did them, we had meetings with the public privately, the developer did, which you guys don't do. You don't tell anybody anything.
Don't care.
Okay? I called public meetings. We got everybody together in room without you guys. And we talked through stuff, and we considered what people were saying. Okay? And I'll give you an example. Years ago, we did Willow Hedge Plan, not me and my dad, and the people on Dahlia Drive went nuts. They blocked the road. Okay? This is forty-five, fifty years ago. They blocked the road. And we said, okay, we want to come through Dahlia. Came off Logan's Ferry. You guys approved Maple Crest Plan, which is a nice development, Orion Homes, rather expensive, but nice. I think this is the same development group. I think, is it?
I developed Maple Crest.
Yeah, nice plan. Well done. There's a road there, okay? That was put in, as you go towards the back plan, you make a left, goes about a hundred yards down into the woods. It was my understanding that road was supposed to be extended up for the new home.
For the third phase of Maple Crest.
Okay? But that was supposed to be extended up. Take that road, extend it up to the airport property. And do it that way. Okay? You made a side deal with the people in Willow Hedge. Willow Hedge got screwed with that development, as far as I'm concerned. It's just terrible. You put a four, five-story building right behind all those people's houses, which should have been zoned single-family residential, and you guys let multifamily go in there. I don't know if any of you were on the panel then, but that bad mistake. Those people all got to look out their back window now at this four, five-story building. Nice development. Wrong place. Okay? Well, you're doing the same thing to these people. I mean, get with the community, talk to the community, come up with a better plan. Instead of doing everything behind the scenes, and then Monday morning, we find out about this meeting. It's crazy. So that's my suggestion.
Your name, please?
Joe Ventresca, Joseph Ventresca. And I'm here to represent Dahlia. Okay, Dahlia Drive. Nobody said anything about Dahlia. Dahlia, I was informed of this meeting, I should have been informed another way, by a little girl that lives on Dahlia. Her name is Cassie. She came to my door and asked me to come to the meeting. This is for them. And not only is their children playing on Dahlia Drive, which I'm concerned about, and also, there's a lot of walkers. There's a lot of people that walk that area. It's very congestive with walkers. And every, I walk, and there's a lot, there's a lot during the day, during the morning. Not now, it's ninety-three degrees. But there's a lot of walkers, and I want to pinpoint that. And that's going to affect that. It's going to affect our everyday life. You know, this is my concern.
Thank you. Regarding the developer, do you have any hesitance and hesitancy in regards to trying to sit down and see really their biggest concerns, and see if we can all come to the middle here?
Yeah, you know, we did a few layouts on this development. And the design that we took and brought to you guys at the planning commission-
Okay.
-utilized all three of the stub roads so that we didn't single out one road. You know, if we would have put a cul-de-sac at the end of Buttercup Drive, or whatever we would have called that road coming through here, you know, how would the people, you know, the people in Quince and the people in Hazel Nut would have probably had ill will towards that? We took all three roads, municipal roads, that were stubbed out for future development, and connected the grid pattern, I thought in a very nice way. Yeah, I mean, we're open to talking to anybody. I mean, these are the three access points to get to the property. You know, if the planning commission has a suggestion on, you know, how to ease the pain, I'm open to hear it.
Well, it seems like easing the pain is going to have to be with you sitting down with the residents and, you know, hearing their voice and see where the biggest wall is here that can be dealt with.
I welcome that.
Hundred percent.
I don't have a problem. Like I said, I don't have a problem tabling this for next month. But someone has to, you know, grab the bull by the horns here, is one of my sayings, that whoever's going to be speaking on the public's behalf and then on the developer's behalf, you're going to have to get down, sit down together face to face, and just have a civilized meeting to find out, you know, where we can get some common ground here. You know, I understand all of their concerns. I really do. With the children, the safety, all of that. But I also understand the developer.
Yeah.
We want the new development. We want the homes. It's good for Monroeville. It's not really that complicated. So, you know, in regards to who's going to lead, you know, lead that with the public, that's something you're going to have to work out with them. Let's go for tabling this for next month, and you get together with the residents, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, we're fine with that.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, very good. How's that sound?
We can establish that after the meeting. Before the motion to table takes place, does anybody have a comment that hasn't already been stated?
Can I say something?
I'm sorry. It's up to the chairman, but we've heard a lot of the same comments about traffic. If somebody has something other than traffic.
My name is Ron Cappuccio.
Ron?
Ron. I am a resident on Hazel Nut. I'm the very last house on the right-hand side. I moved up there in nineteen ninety-eight. I did it for a reason, because it's quiet. I got one great neighbor to the left of me, and I got nothing to the right of me. And that's the way I would like to keep it. Okay? The streets are narrow. Can't deal with the traffic. If you're going to widen the streets, that means you're going to put sidewalks in, that means you're going to take away from my property. I don't want that. I already have issues with the mine underneath. I already have issues with the mine underneath. We've been down that road, you guys talked about it already. I already have issues.
Right.
All right, I don't want it. I like it where it's at, I like the way things are. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Ron. All right, I think we need to move forward here.
I don't believe you were through with the public comment. Due to the sunshine law, you should finish public comment. And I have two quick points here. The first one is point of clarification. On the map that was presented with the eye in the sky looking at it, is that inaccurate in any way? Like, have you mislabeled streets? Is that why there was problems? Because one of the reasons not to vote on it is you have to have an accurate map or you can't vote on it. This has to be accurate.
We're not voting on it this evening. It's being tabled.
All right, that was just one point. The other point is, I'd like to know where you are in the process of having this reviewed in, by Allegheny County.
What is your question?
Did you receive comments from ACED?
Has this been reviewed?
It's, it's been submitted, we haven't received comments yet.
You haven't received comments back from the county yet?
It's been submitted to them for review.
Thank you.
All right.
Go ahead.
It's up to the chairman.
All right.
Hi there, Ted.
All right, I'm going to let the record indicate, this is the last comment we're going to take before we place a vote to table, okay?
Thank you, Deborah Becker again. I did want to ask, in previous discussion, it says that access to Logan's Ferry was removed by the residents of Willow Head because it's a landlocked property. How, what is, what are next steps, like, how, how do we as residents of Valley View and Quince and Buttercup and Blueberry, I mean...
And Dahlia.
And Dahlia, Dahlia too. And yes, all the, all the streets, all the streets. You know, and, and having the developers meet with the residents, I just want to make sure that this is something that is clearly communicated to all residents of Garden City, not something that's just going to be posted on Facebook. This is something that should very much be communicated to the public, so that if this is a development that is going to continue to be, like, discussed about, that the developers do find that proper, like, head person, whomever it may be, to represent the, the residents and the community. I just ask that be taken into serious consideration.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Danny. All right, how are you, sir?
Good, Tim Snyder, I live on Dahlia.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Tim Snyder.
Tim, all right, Tim.
And I live on Dahlia, been here for fourteen years. All three of my kids go to Gateway. What's this going to do to our school system? Because Evergreen is a very small elementary school. How, I mean, they're already filled. Like, there's not even enough room for all the kids to be in. How, how does that get, how's that affected by this? Is there any plans to build a bigger school?
Well, that, that's certainly not.
Because you're putting ninety-five homes here.
Not on, yeah, that's not even a topic to discuss this evening.
Well, I, I understand, but you did say, does anybody else have anything different to say, other than traffic?
All right.
So this is something different, other than traffic. It's a concern. Because when the traffic, you know, when you talk, um, Mr. Zach, you said about the traffic. You did all this traffic reports, none of them, like, the four o'clock to six o'clock, were not done during the school release times when buses are coming through. Buses are done coming through at, like, three fifty. You know, so, but I agree with everyone here as well. Like, I walk, I walk up to Quince, I walk up to Buttercup and Blueberry. You can barely get one car down there. People are parking on the street. I think you guys really need to seriously consider an alternative route to this. And I'm also very disappointed that nobody was communicated, because I found out the same way as my neighbor, Joe did. I had someone knock on my door, hey, by the way, there's a meeting, that's just Tuesday night, about eight-thirty, I'm sitting on my porch. Communication should be the first thing you do. If you're going to represent us, you need to let us know first. Because it sounds like you're doing a backdoor deal here.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you, Ted.
Just one, quick, quick thing here. Nobody's talking about emergency services, about fire trucks and stuff.
Okay.
I mean, you know, that's, they get to that plan, they're going to come up Buttercup. It's a narrow street, just saying. Fire department's probably going to want another fire truck.
Well, there, there has been provisions for emergency vehicles
Yeah, but that's...
for the fire trucks and so forth, for a turnaround and so forth. That, that is...
If you've ever been up on this street and you see the fire trucks come up there, it's like, the road is just too narrow. Especially Buttercup. Now, Quince is not too bad, but Buttercup's really narrow.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to say, I just forgot to sign my name.
But I would, I would like to say one more thing. It sounds like for the thirteenth time that you keep insisting that, that you were gonna actually agree on this proposal this evening. I mean, oh my goodness, what if I didn't hear about this? You were going to, I accept it. Sometimes people buy parcels of land, and guess what? They got screwed and you can't build on it. You should have known ahead of time that you're going to be dependent on these no outlet roadways. Because guess what? It's, it's sorry, it's not going to happen, okay? You got a bad deal, it should have been, you should sue the people that sold you that land, because this is just not, not kosher. You keep saying, we've got to find a way because we're going to have this development one way or another. No, sir, maybe it should not be happen at all, just like they proposed having a Walmart, and guess what? It doesn't go in the fruition, come into fruition. So I, I, I really frowned upon your statements of, it's going to happen, let's find, let's talk about it. Talk about Maple Crest, Crest coming in that way. Propose that, sir. Not, how can we appease these Quince Road people and, and Dahlia people? Come in a different way. Take us off the equation, okay, because we don't want it. And, and if it has to be, well then, sorry, you bought a piece of crap property and you lost money. Make it a write-off.
The municipality cannot refuse them access to those public rightaways.
You were not around in nineteen fifty-five. My father was.
There's no connection to Logan's Ferry.
Sorry, you, you weren't around when they, they stated a fact that this would not be a throughway, since for sixty-nine years we enjoyed a non-throughway.
Show me a document that says that.
I, I don't have it currently, but it was said.
It's a public road that can be extended.
You show me a document that said it would be open from nineteen fifty-five.
I don't have to, it's on the plan.
From nineteen fifty-five.
It's a public road that can be extended.
No, from nineteen five fifty-five, you weren't even born then.
There's no connection to Logan's Ferry.
Well, sorry, sometimes...
It's all private property.
We're not going to be happy. Come in through the alternate way. Make us happy. Our roads are narrow, there are no designated sidewalks, there is now. If we're going to have sixty cars per hour, I'm sorry, it's unacceptable. It's dangerous. I respectfully request you deny this authorization and come in a different way. You're impacting our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, you said you wanted to, wanted to, I'm sorry, let this gentleman add his hands up before you now. Sure, please. What's your name?
Louis Sumets. I live on Buttercup Drive.
Louis.
Please sign in.
Sign your name, please, on the register there?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to ask the council, years ago, I think it was two thousand and four, somebody come up with a proposal to build on the airport. And the council back then voted it down. Okay, I don't know if any of you people were on there back then or not. Under circumstances about the mines and all the other stuff and that, okay? We knew about it, we came to the meeting, we talked about it. Is there any way that they could come up with an alternate plan for this? A different design than what these have? Because when I used to, where I used to work at, I'd get a bid. We'd get two or three bids. Two or three different people come up and submit a plan. And then you people, which we put you in here, would vote on the best one that was for the people, not the contractor, okay? Because once a contractor's done, he leaves, it's gone. We're the ones that have to live here and put up with us. Now, just talking about when Garden City was built, didn't they have a setup to go down to Greenleaf? Yes, there's an access. You go up Greenleaf, I think, four or five houses. There's a, a pretty good-sized space there.
I know what you're talking about, yeah.
It says no dumping. That was supposed to be the access from the airport into Garden City. Nobody's mentioned that.
They, they, the developer did look at that. It's owned by another person, it's private property, and they refused to sell the property.
Well, I thought...
It's not part of the airport property, it's a separate parcel. They, they tried to purchase it, the owner would not sell it.
Oh, so I... I didn't know somebody else owned that. You did go through that. Because all those years, I moved there in fifty-five, like this lady did, okay? And that was always the assumption, that was the right way to get to the airport.
And it wouldn't make sense. They, they wanted to connect to that, but they could not...
Because that would have been the, the best way to put this in, to have one access in and one access out. You did that with the air, uh, hospital. Okay, when you guys play the hospital, you have one way in and one way out of a hospital. I, I, I still can't figure that one out.
Which hospital?
Monroeville. Four of them. There's one way in and one way out.
There's, there's two, there's two ways. You can go down McGinnley to get to the northern pipe.
Why didn't you come off, no, it's a different...
I mean, the main entrance.
But anyhow, there's always an alternative to what this plan is, okay? You people as board members should look at more than one option. Was this the only contractor that come up and asked, and put a bid on this? And put a bid on the other part that left no access to Logan's Ferry Road? How did that go through?
It's, uh, the airport road was a private road, it was never a public road, so we, the municipality had no control over it.
So you bought a piece of property you can't get to?
It has three access points.
Three public road accesses.
They're public.
That was airport property. Yeah, but when you sold that front section out there, why didn't you have the stipulation in there that the people who built behind them, which are these guys, have access to that?
Willow Hedge would not, the residents of Willow Hedge would not permit that.
What's Willow Hedge got to do with that? What's Willow Hedge got to do with that? It does, they, those people have nothing to do with the airport. No way, I'll try not to fool, okay? What does Willow Hedge, what, what, why didn't you let Willow Hedge get to you what to do with that?
That proposed road would directly affect Willow Hedge.
You have to speak into the phone, I can't hear you.
The proposed road you're talking about would directly affect Willow Hedge. It would, it would run through their backyards.
What you're putting in now is...
All right, all right, hold on. One at a time, please. One at a time.
Yeah, I thought I'm trying to get...
The difference, the difference is, the difference is, airport road was never a municipal road, it was always private. The municipality had no control over that road, so when the developer came in, Willow Hedge residents demanded that road would never be used. So the developer agreed.
And the council or the planning commission?
We, we can't force them to put a right-of-way in.
No, but you could set up stipulations and say, okay, if we grant you this property to be built on, but you have to have access to Logan's Ferry, an easement or whatever. It's called a right-of-way. That's basic, uh...
We can't force them to do that.
Yeah, so the council basically landlocked that.
No.
Yeah.
It has three access points.
Garden City.
It has three public access points.
Public access road. So the airport road wasn't a public access road? Why didn't you make it one?
Because it was never built to municipal standards.
Why? Because all of a sudden, all these buildings are coming up, and we're, nobody knows about it. How did the Hedgeswood or Maple Crest people know about it? Oh, you're shutting me down.
It gets their lights.
Lights are going out.
I think it was that lady.
No, she, no, she hit the light when I said it.
All right, I'm not going to argue with it now because it's a losing battle. But would you mind drilling, core drilling it out? Sixty-nine, eight core drill from Monroeville Mall. Do you know that?
So?
You didn't know that?
What's that have to do with it?
Because I worked there when it was built. That whole thing is core drilling, and it's starting to fail, okay? And all your...
Where's it failing?
Technically, you're getting cracks and subsidence and stuff up through there. Yeah, I know, I know, it's true. Water runs downhill. You as a council have to listen to what we have to say.
This is planning commission, this is not council.
Uh, planning commission, okay? Before you start, get, get two other contractors in here to look at this.
We don't control who develops property.
Yeah, we, we can't control that.
No, you can't, but you can put out for bids and say, okay, all right, the people around here don't like this little redesign.
The property's been for sale for years.
What's that?
The property has been for sale for years.
Yeah, I know, that's why the previous council voted it down because of the mine subsidence and all the other part. Do you know all the houses that are built in Garden City, their foundations are slagged from the steel mill?
And that's why they have problems.
Did you ever take that into consideration?
They, they won't be doing any of that in this development. That's why Garden City has problems.
Yeah.
They're built improperly.
Because that, so now you're doing more.
No, this, this is not affecting...
Yeah, it's part of their opinion. You could sit there and say no, and I say yes. But have we all said it?
You show me that, you show us an engineering report that says, shows it's going to damage those properties.
I'm just coming back. That airport property, I looked at it years ago. Monroeville would never zone it residential for years, okay? And ultimately, they backed off, I don't know if you guys were on the planning commission when they approved this senior residence place. You probably were, you were probably the engineer, I don't know, for Monroeville, I don't know. But it wasn't the Willow Hedge people that wouldn't allow that road, okay?
Absolutely was.
No, no, you, you're very condescending. You talk back every time, all these people...
Hold on. I was at all the meetings, Willow Hedge showed up like you did and demanded that road would never be used.
Hear me out. Why couldn't there have been a plan that that road was on the other side of the senior citizen, citizen?
Because there's a gas line.
Hear me out. Away from Willow Hedge, don't talk about the airport road. Why wasn't that the plan?
There's a high-pressure gas line on that side.
Then why didn't it come up through, why doesn't this come up through Maple Crest?
It doesn't have to.
You don't even own the property yet, probably. My guess is you're, it's still owned by Clover Communities, where the venture capitalists that funds them. And you guys are trying to get this approved, so then you'll buy the property, am I right?
You're describing typical development.
Yeah, so you, they don't own the property, just so you all know of that. My question would be, why wasn't this thought through by the developer, Clover Communities, and whoever owned the land at that point, which I think is Clover or somebody's parent? Why wasn't it thought through then? Put the senior home way in the back? Put the residential community in the front? Nobody would see the senior home back there. You leave all the trees around these neighborhoods, Garden City. And you put the road for the senior home way on the other side, I understand there's a gas line, okay? You figure out a way around that. You're going to fill fifty, thousand, fifteen hundred columns of concrete into the ground, pushing all the groundwater in another direction. You could have figured out how that gas, get around that gas well, no doubt in my mind. This is what baffled you. And your response, and I'm not looking at these guys, because I think they're all listening. Your response every time somebody says something is because, basically, I'm right and you're wrong. That's just, you need to listen to the...
I, I, I don't think that's the message he's sending. I, I think he's trying to... Hold on, hold on, let me speak, please. I think he's just trying to let everyone know and be as clear and concise as possible for what is available, for what we were presented with, with the applications that have been filed from the developer. And we're all trying to do the best that we can with the information we have. So I, there's nothing, no malice involved here with Mr. Weldon trying to speak, you know?
After listening to all this, my logic, my head says, you guys should go back to drawing board, bag this, do your little development for Maple Crest that you originally were going to finish with, how many more homes, I don't, you said it, I don't remember. Go do that one, forget about this project, okay? Unless there's a better way to access the property, so these people aren't affected.
Redesign, get us something to paint.
We're actually presenting a by-rights development. We're not even coming here with a PRD or asking for any variances.
I understand.
We're actually presenting a by-rights development the way the municipal code reads, off of three municipal-owned roads.
I understand all that, I'm just saying, it's affecting the community.
I, I understand it's affecting the community, but we're not coming here trying to do a backdoor deal or something with Monroeville. We're not even asking them for any variances or anything crazy, like a lot of the other developments do. We're coming here with a by-rights plan.
You don't care about the public, is what you're telling me?
No, I do care about the public, I'm just saying, here, we're... And, and I'm, and I'm...
What kind of response is it, the response you give these people?
And I'm willing to sit down and meet with everybody, but I'm not willing to sit down and meet with a bunch of people to argue. You know, we're presenting a by-rights development.
I know, and you're not, you need to consider other alternatives than what you do here.
All right, let, let me interject here. Let me interject here just for a second. From what we discussed earlier, would that be yourself that would take the lead to speak on the public's behalf?
If I'm available, I'll, I'll come to the meeting.
Because I agree. I agree with the developer. You can't turn this into a circus where, you know, fifty people show up and everybody's yelling and screaming. That's not going to, that's not going to work.
They need to come open-minded, and I haven't heard that from the developer or from your engineer. They need to come with an open mind to do it a different way.
Is it going to be yourself? Let, let's get that on the record right now, then. Is it, would that be you? Just sit down.
We just need, they, people need to come with an open mind, and that's not how this meeting's going.
At all. Thank you.
Okay. All right, sounds like we may have a spokesperson. All right, sounds like we may have a spokesperson for the community. Who would we have on the developer's side?
It'll be me, and I'll bring our engineer.
What was your name again?
John Spagnolo.
All right, John, you were on the application, aren't you?
Yeah. So just to be clear, we're gonna meet with this gentleman, he is gonna be able to speak for the entire.
No, 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 well, well, I don't recommend it, because I don't think you're gonna accomplish it.
We're not gonna get anything done that way, we need, we need you guys to, or three people, yeah, or something, however you do it.
But everybody's not here to speak, though.
He should be able to.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we're, but we can't have a group of 50 people, cause we're gonna get nothing done.